Everybody ready? Woo. Yes, you're good. Good evening. Tonight is Monday, July 21st. Welcome to the Lakewood Board of Education meeting. Ms. Kundav, can you call the roll?
Ms. Katzenberger?
Present.
Mrs. Shaughnessy?
Present.
Mrs. Clark Sutton?
Here.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Ms. Dotman?
Here.
Next, I'd like a motion to appoint a pressure pro tem.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Kundav, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Katzenberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Mrs. Clark Sutton?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mrs. Dotman?
Aye.
Great. I would invite everybody to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, do I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
Yeah, I move adoption of the agenda with three changes. The first is item K-10, appointment of a Lakewood Public Library trustee to be moved to the superintendent's report. Item M-6, Lakewood Rec. and Education Commission appointment to be moved to the superintendent's report. And then we have a correction to item N-2, which should have been first reading, not approval on one reading.
Do we have a second?
And that's in other business.
Do I have a second for the motion with changes?
Second.
Wonderful. Ms. Kundav, can you call the roll?
Ms. Katzenberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Mrs. Clark Sutton?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Dotman?
Aye.
Great. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving right along to the superintendent's report, which will be given by Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Palumbo.
Thank you, President Katzenberger. I would first like to call to the podium, Mr. James Crawford, Director of the Lakewood Public Library, as well as Persa Sosiak, the President of the Board of Trustees. If you guys could join us at the podium to speak, please, about your recommendation for reappointment of the library trustee, Mr. Michael Artbauer.
Good evening and thank you, Assistant Superintendent Palumbo, President Katzenberger, Vice President Shaughnessy, members of the Board of Education, members of the public in person and those attending virtually. I am very grateful for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Again, my name is Persa Sosiak. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of the Lakewood Public Library, and I'm also currently serving as the President of the Board. I'm here this evening with you to bring forward the nomination of Mr. Michael Artbauer as trustee to the Lakewood Public Library. During his previous tenure as a trustee, Mr. Artbauer served as President of the Board, and in which time he successfully navigated the library through the COVID pandemic. He also was president during the tremendous and very impressive renovation of the Madison branch. Mr. Artbauer brings strong experience in management, training, and communication to our board. I should also note that he was a commissioned officer in the United States Marine Corps. The Board of Trustees is grateful to Mr. Artbauer for his continued willingness to support the library and to serve. I would thank you in advance for supporting his reappointment, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow board members have any questions?
Is Mr. Crawford speaking or who?
Is Mr. Crawford speaking or are we, and then taking questions or?
I'll answer any questions, but I otherwise defer to Mrs. Sosiak, the Board President. And I would like to welcome Mr. Artbauer, who's here. And like Mrs. Sosiak, I welcome your favorable consideration.
I didn't want to be asking questions before they were finished with their presentation. But I do have questions. Mr. Artbauer, thank you for your service in the Marine Corps and thank you for your service to Lakewood. What made you want to be on the Board of Trustees? Like what makes somebody do that?
It was a desire to serve the community and a love of all things book. I know books that brought me to my life path. And it was just kind of a natural. When I asked around, a neighbor of mine, Mr. Christopher Johnson, who was at one point the President of the Board of a Place to Serve, he recommended this one to me, and I thought about it, and I thought, this was absolutely perfect. I have truly enjoyed, loved, embraced, hated, all of them, my time with the Board. COVID, as we all know.
Very challenging.
Tried all of our souls. The wonderful renovation project, a challenge, but an awesome result. And that fills my soul to see what we did as members of the Board, the Director and the faculty, not the faculty, I work at Cleveland State, the staff of the library, to breathe new life into that for the community and to see it move into the 21st century with technology and openness for the citizens of Lakewood and all who come to both of our branches. That means a lot to me. You know, my service in the Marine Corps, this is my service to the community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Artbauer. We have many boards and commissions in this city, and people don't always know what you do when you're on them. So I thought it would give you the opportunity to explain that. So thank you for your service.
And just a reminder, what is the length of the term?
It's seven years.
That's a lengthy term.
Just, congratulations on wanting to serve again. I was lucky enough to serve on the library board very, before this board. And, but you have, you're going to have your hands full, as we do, with the legislature, not just in the financial aspect of it, but in the pushback on local control and recognizing what the community wants. So I am thankful that you're willing to take your experience on to do that.
As I pondered what I might say tonight, that is, that had crossed my mind. We know that there are financial uncertainties now with the new budget. We know that there are pushes for censorship that is an affront to what we think a public library should be. And we, as a Board, and with the Director and the staff, are ready to hold our ground and be the stewards of good citizenship and what is access to all materials that we can.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. We ready for the? If you want to go ahead and have a seat, and we'll do our next, next component. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We vote later? Or do we?
You can do it now if you want.
Okay.
Sure.
Have we moved it to this part of the agenda, right?
Yes, yes. So that's education. That's in the education section.
So that would be you, Lisa?
Sorry, I'm finding it.
Mrs. Dotman?
I'm sorry.
I know you're, we'll give you a moment, but it is.
Thank you. I was not here last meeting. It's a vacation. All right. All right, for Lakewood Public Library Board of Trustees reappointments. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lakewood City School District that Michael Artbauer be reappointed as a trustee of the Lakewood Public Library to a term commencing on September 12th, 2025, and expiring on September 12th, 2032.
Second.
Oh, this is a roll call?
Yeah.
Ms. Kundav, can you call the roll?
Ms. Katzenberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Mrs. Clark Sutton?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Dotman?
Aye.
And it has passed. Congratulations, Mr. Artbauer. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, I would like to invite to the podium, Mr. Mark Walter, our Director of Community and District Activities. He will speak about the CREC recommendation, appointing as a new CREC Commissioner, Mr. Christopher Furrow.
Good evening, President Katzenberger, Vice President Shaughnessy, distinguished board members, Dr. Palumbo, Ms. Kundav. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask you to act on the resolution to approve Christopher Furrow's appointment to the Community Recreation and Education Commission. So, full transparency, I knew Chris when he was an 11th grader at Emerson Middle School. Just 11-year-old. Did I say 11 years ago? Or no, 11-year-old in the sixth grade, sorry. Just very excited to learn science. That's all I remember of him. But he has a long history with the Lakewood City Schools, as well as the Recreation Department and Athletic Department within the school system. He went to Taft, looks a little different than Emerson, when it was a middle school, and then he graduated in 2007 from Lakewood High School. He also has had a pretty diverse career path. He actually started his career working for the Akron Arrows, now the Rubber Ducks, as the clubhouse manager for the then Cleveland Indians affiliate. He's worked in retail banking for several years and currently is an account executive for Highland Software. But more importantly, he moved back into Lakewood, how many years ago?
20.
2020 with his lovely wife, Chelsea. And he has two daughters, one entering Garfield in sixth grade, one at Emerson, and then a three-year-old son. And they're, I don't know if your son's not, he's not actively engaged in rec programs yet, but his daughter's out.
Close.
Yeah, soon. And he also is coached in our basketball programs. In his letter of interest, Chris stated, "Ultimately, my intention is to serve the community in a meaningful way. Given the impact Lakewood Recreation Department and sports programs had on my life, I feel obligated to protect that experience for my kids and all others in Lakewood moving forward." So when we, the CREC commissioners interviewed, they were clearly impressed with Chris's, his story, his commitment to kids, and his long history in Lakewood. So at this point, we are asking that you approve his nomination to the Community Recreation and Education Commission.
Thank you. Do my fellow board members, does anyone have any questions or comments?
I've seen Chris coach, and I have to say, I appreciate not only what you do for the girls on your team, but also girls on the other team. I think it's really important that we take a more holistic view. And I think I appreciate you continuing your volunteer work even further. So thank you.
Do you have anything you want to say?
Just thank you. I'm honestly grateful and excited to, like he said, kind of get back to the place I grew up and a lot of the stuff that makes Lakewood such a special place. So just thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. I know this is a second reading. Would we just be?
It's a separate vote.
So we would just be part of the regular, or we just vote?
We do now, just like at HR.
Yes. Yeah, we moved it out of HR, so we'll vote on it now.
Okay. So we, do I have a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
So moved.
And all in favor?
We'll vote on it.
Is a roll call?
Yes.
Oh, that's what I was asking.
It didn't say.
Yes, this is a roll call.
Okay. So Ms. Kundav, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Katzenberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Mrs. Clark Sutton?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Dotman?
Aye.
Great. Motion has been carried and congratulations.
And this concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. All sorts of fun new things tonight. We will now move on to the communications part of the evening. Anybody who's here for extra things, this is the time when you can excuse yourselves if you are so inclined. You don't need to stick around. You're welcome to, of course. But if you'd like to go about your merry way for the evening, please feel free.
Thank you.
Have a lovely evening. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. First, we'll start with board comments. Do any of my fellow board members have any?
I do, President Katzenberger. Just a note of, well, one, I hope everyone's having a, having a good summer. I know there's a lot of camps and clinics and summer activities through Lakewood Recreation and other programs across the district. I hope folks are taking advantage of those. And I just want to recognize our summer pool staff who work for the Community Recreation and Education Department, who are well-trained and present and serving our community very well seven days a week at Foster and Vex Pools. I know my family's had a little bit more time than me to enjoy them, but I've been there as well, and just wanted to note that. So thank you.
Fall activities, you can already start registering for a lot of them. So definitely, if you are interested, and I think it's in sports or activities, like definitely take a look at those things before they fill up.
I, ditto, Mr. Callahan. I hope everyone's having a good summer and making some good summer memories. I would like to just put a shout out to urge people to be cautious and careful and respectful of their neighbors. There have been some near misses. My husband runs in the early morning, and driving is not automatic. You have to look at a lot of things. And walkers have to look before they cross the street. And bikers have to look before they turn. Like all of us have responsibility in keeping ourselves and each other safe. So please just slow down a little bit and look around before you make a cross across the street. And then we will be voting on a few things this evening, which I don't disagree with, but I just would like to make it known that I need to be sure that there is time for me to review policies before I vote yes on them. It's, I'm not a rubber stamp for Neola, and I just want time to understand. Voting yes, because if it's really horrible, we can change it. And nothing's horrible. But I just, I don't, I need more time than that, so.
Thank you, Kelly. Betsy, did you have anything?
Not too much.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you. I know that there's, that's a great process improvement we can work on. And I know that H2O had their summer clothing sale this past weekend, so that was, I just, it's sort of a shout out to folks that, over the summer, a lot of our student organizations and, I know that there are sports teams that are practicing and holding camps and holding, doing, a lot of, coaches are involved and students are involved. And I just wanted to give a shout out to everybody who continues their work over the summer, that that is, keeps things going and gets everybody geared up for things starting very, very soon. I think we're about a month away, almost exactly, to the start of school. I can't believe it either. So thank you to everybody for keeping the fire stoked. That being said, is we all set with board comments? Okay, then we'll move on to public comments. Our first speaker is Kelly Moyer. Oh, I'm sorry. Before you speak, just a reminder that everybody has three minutes. We'll have the timer. Don't forget to state your name and your street, just the street you live on. You don't need to have your full address. And if it gets to three minutes, I will cut you off. But I know you've been here before, so you're probably familiar with the drill. That five is not accurate. Just kidding.
That's okay. Good evening. My name is Kelly Moyer. I live on Lakeland Avenue and a parent of four children, three of whom attend Lakewood schools and one future Ranger, who just turned one. And frankly, I can't believe that I'm back here again on the same topic, the potential closing of one or more of our neighborhood elementary schools. Specifically, I'm here tonight deeply concerned about the ongoing delays in the process. Starting in the fall of 2024, almost nine months ago, we were told that a decision would be made in May. Then in May, we were told that the decision would be pushed to September after the new school year begins. The reason given was that the state budget needed to be finalized and the task force wanted to meet again to see how the budget may affect district finances. As a reminder, this process started with the superintendent telling us that this decision was not financially motivated. While the budget is now complete, the task force has not been contacted to set up a meeting, and here we are with no timeline, no updates, and no clear communication from the district. We haven't even heard the report that was the outcome of the task force's tireless months of work. The superintendent told us on June 12th that the report would be delayed, and we've heard nothing since. Actually, there's been no mention of the task force or the pending decision at any school board meeting since the school year ended. These delays are not just inconvenient, they are damaging. Every time the community is left waiting, it deepens a sense of mistrust. Parents are expected to make long-term decisions about their children's education and well-being, some of the most important work that we have as parents, yet we're being left in the dark. By delaying the decision again and again, you're asking families and students to step into another school year with anxiety, confusion, and instability. By not speaking up, you're forcing people to instead rely on speculation and rumors. That's not fair to our children, to our educators and administrators, or the community as a whole. We understand that these are difficult decisions, but transparency and timely communication are the bare minimum that we deserve from you, our elected officials. I just know that there are some of you up there that want to put this issue to bed, that want to move on, pass a levy, get our finances in order, and work together with the community to build the trust back again. If there is a new timeline, please share it. If there are updates, please tell us. And if there are no updates, then at least acknowledge that and give us a realistic sense of the timeline and what happens next. Because silence after broken promise after a broken promise of action sends a loud message, and that's not one of trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Allison Gall.
Hi, my name is Allison Gall. Good evening. I live on Ethel Avenue, and I'm a parent of two enthusiastic Rangers, one of which who is starting kindergarten and counting down the day. Months ago, I spoke from a veteran teacher's perspective about trust. I'm speaking again tonight because I'm still concerned about the continued uncertainty surrounding the issue of closing or repurposing a school or two. We are once again on the precipice of losing community support and trust in district leadership. Back in the fall, we were told a decision would come in May with plenty of time to process and move forward. Now, with even the state budget finalized, we're still waiting with no clear timeline and little communication, not since the superintendent's beginning-of-May video message posted on the website. As parents and community members, we are still talking, speculating, theorizing. We haven't forgotten what was proposed, and we're still rallying support for keeping all the schools open. We want to trust the process, but that's difficult without transparency or regular updates. And this isn't just about planning, it's about trust and working together as a community. As a community member, I feel like something will happen without my knowledge or that things are moving behind closed doors or with no more task force or community input. And while that may not even be remotely true, that's the impression that comes across, and it's that impression that matters. Having to go through the beginning of the school year like that will be detrimental to relationships with and among parents, students, and your teachers and staff, as everyone will still feel in limbo. If closure or repurposing is the main topic of conversation, it will distract from the strong foundations needed at the start of the school year. And if there's no message, your teachers and principals will shoulder the brunt of that mistrust. Trust me, it's all a parent will ask about. I recognize these decisions are complex, and I appreciate the care that's being taken. But clarity is key to keeping families, educators, and especially the broader voting community, engaged and informed. We want to be partners in this process, and that starts with open, ongoing communication, even if the news is no news yet. Honestly, many of us who have been following along feel forgotten when instead we should be working on the next hurdle, the upcoming levy. So tonight, I'm respectfully asking for the following. A clear, updated timeline, a summary of what has already been discussed, clear information on the finalized state budget and how that is expected to impact the district and this non-financial decision, and, most importantly, a commitment to more regular updates moving forward, even if there's no new information to report. I understand there are complex and difficult decisions, but stronger communication builds trust and keeps our community engaged. We're here, and we care deeply, and we want to work together to support our schools and children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gabriel Cooper.
Hi, Gabriel Cooper, Sloan Avenue. I'm here without notes, so I'm going to try to keep to the time. And what I'd like to say tonight is also sort of in the vein of transparency. And I read up on the rules on what we're supposed to be doing at the public comments. And there is no requirement for you all to engage with me. That's 100% clear from the letter of the law. But what I would like to do is to invite you to be more open about what you are thinking regarding the, let's call it what it is, the attempt to destroy public education from the side of the State House. We've used the word attack, that's mild. What they're trying to do is erase us, and we can't let that happen. I know it keeps me up at night because I have two little kids who are just, you know, on the verge of entering the school system. But I want to know if you, if it keeps you up at night and if you have a contingency plan, like what's happening? All we heard was our dear treasurer provide us with the information that, hey, a levy is going to come, we're going to have an operations levy. Great. That's a short-term solution to a short-term problem. I want to hear what you all have to think about, you know, the long term. Where are we going? How are we going to actually make this happen under the pressure of that great attack? So I would say, while, you don't have to respond to me, there's no requirement to do so. I think everybody here and everybody out there is waiting for you to say something. So I would appreciate it if you did. And I really, really would welcome seeing that kind of. And I really, really would welcome seeing that kind of lively discussion here. Because I appreciate what Mrs. Clark Sutton says. She's not a rubber stamp. What we hear is roll calls, and that's the extent of it in these meetings and reports. So, if some debate or discussion could come in here, I think that would generate a lot of trust. Because it would show that you are engaging with those issues on the same level that some of us are, but we don't have the power. We gave you the power, so let's you use it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that is the extent of comments for the evening. We're moving on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Kundav, can you call the roll? Aye.
Mrs. Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Mrs. Clark Sutton?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Dotman?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have Human Resources, Mrs. Shaughnessy.
Thank you very much. Okay, we talked about these at our last meeting, but we have a total of 98 certified personnel actions. That includes appointments, special compensations, and salary and pay rate adjustments. We have 57 classified actions, appointments, special compensations, and pay rate and salary adjustments. And we have 45 community recreation and education actions in aquatics, athletics, and programs. And I move adoption of these resolutions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item is a resolution to approve amended to the master service agreement between the Lakewood Board of Education and Rachel Wixie and Associate Dedicated School Staffing. This is the group that we use for substitute teachers throughout the district, as do many other districts. I move adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is a resolution to approve the Lakewood Community Baseball Softball Association name change. We talked about this at our last meeting. It will allow the Recreation Department greater opportunity to cooperate in providing services and will be... Make it less expensive for the softball group. And I move adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we've already approved the new appointment, so that concludes Human Resources.
Great. We will move on to other board business. Still you, Mrs. Shaughnessy.
Thank you. We have one classified action... Or we have classified actions, six resignations and one appointment. And because these... We always want to fill positions as quickly as possible. They've asked that we approve this on one reading, and so I move that on one reading, we approve this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Kundav, can you call the roll?
Ms. Katzenberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Ms. Clark Sutton?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Dotman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next resolution is a resolution to amend the employment contracts of the superintendent, assistant superintendent, assistant treasurer, director of operations and treasurer. This is the first reading for this resolution. And basically, this board and this district has always given the administration pay raise equal to that the bargaining units have negotiated. So we have voted on their contracts. It's 2.7% increase. And we voted on the personnel, other personnel, the administrators, principals. And so, in two weeks, we'll be voting on the last contract, so it'll be impacted by this same increase.
So by bargaining units, you're talking about the teachers and the other unions?
Yes, the other...
The unions. So this is the last one. Great.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any...
We're not voting.
I'm sorry. Yes, so we will vote on this in two weeks. And that concludes other board business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.